Okay, I will call the meeting to order at 6:30. Diane? Hi. So, welcome. I do not have anything to add to the agenda tonight. So, welcome, pray, to comments from the public. Cutlin, you're just here to observe. All right, great. Okay, then that takes us to...
Are we deleting the recommendations for professional appointments?
Yes.
Okay. You want me to make you a motion?
All right, we're going to go to the consent agenda. Go ahead.
Oh, Marla, move, I'm going to move that we approve the school board meeting minutes of September 5th, 2017, and the approval of warrants.
I'll leave some pictures down. I hate opposing her. Thank you. Yeah, that puts us quickly ahead of schedule, probably not for one. So, at the time that Kim and I first started talking with Beth and Mathis, she was headed for a conference, so we decided we wouldn't put it on the first meeting in September agenda. But, so we kept it for tonight. And I think it's fair to say you don't have a complete picture, but you're going to share with us what is understood to date.
I am, and I'm going to stand, is that okay? So I can see everybody's face. When I present, I have to see people. The teacher in me must be. Are you okay if I stand here? Are you okay with the sound? Am I loud enough?
Yeah.
Okay. So, the board's role in ESSA has really changed from the past with Nickelby and... So, I will explain that as we go. You want me to take the clicker?
I, I think I'm at you.
Okay, good.
We might.
So there are some policies to adopt, which this presentation will go right through all five of these. And then the continuous improvement plans, I'll explain that to you. The budgeting of resources that would allow us to follow the act and what we have to do. And really, an awareness of the guidelines and what we have to do as a school district to be compliant within ESSA. And then you have to hold me accountable to the act. And this is a big one, so, but it's, it is great. I, actually, you can get them. So, the required policies, which you already have approved, the proficiency-based graduation requirements is one that under ESSA, and also the ed quality standards that a board does have to approve. And then the other one is the class size policy. And we do have a committee working on that to refine that, and it has to follow the state and federal policies within that, also the law. So, we have, actually, the committee is meeting, I think, Thursday morning. And it's, that committee is of principals and Deb Anderson and myself. And then the other ones that you, under the, under ESSA, so the first two are really about Vermont and what the ed quality standards require us to do. And then the policies under ESSA are the title one, and then the parent engagement one, which you have already approved. So, that role and responsibility, you are done. So then the continuous improvement plans, your, these are the old action plans, they were called. They're more about growth now than the school improvement. They no longer call it that, or they don't call it the action plan. It's really about continuous improvement. You will, in, towards the end of the year, May or June, have to approve the CIPs, the continuous improvement plans, from all 10 schools, or nine schools, and a school district one. So you'll have 10 to approve. Our hope is that we write one for the district as a leadership team gathering data. And Voices for Education is part of that needs assessment of what the community is saying they want in their school district. There's lots of different data that we will be collecting, and I can explain that as we go. And then we take all that data and create the continuous improvement plan. The first part of it, which I'll talk about in a bit, is due in March. And we're right on our, we're right on the right track for submitting the first piece of it in March. And it has to do with a vision. And then it has to be submitted after you okay it. It will be submitted to the agency.
Do you want us to wait for questions after?
You can do it however you would like. You can do it as we go, if it's appropriate for this one, sure.
And especially if it's clarification, if it's discussion, I'd like to say that.
This is not discussion yet. You mentioned, you started to say 10 schools and then nine schools. Is it because CTE doesn't have to follow?
Correct, yes, correct. Good clarification. So, this is hard to see, and I will take each row and get into more detail. But Amy and I really wanted to show you the difference from what we were doing back in 1997 to present day. And it kind of takes the history of Vermont and our, your requirements as a board, also our requirements as school districts, or as a superintendent to the... So, for school improvement plans, this is how they've changed. So, with Act 60 and 68, there was, we, you were required to have a school action plan, and you had to okay that by the school. And I think, the districts that I was involved in at this time, or supervisory unions, the board had a big say, and did a lot of that work with community members. And it was a large piece of what boards did. Those never had to be submitted to the Agency of Education. Now, then we move to the No Child Left Behind in 2002. That's still, action plans were still required and still no longer submitted to the agency, but kind of in a different way. They got a little more involved with the schools at that time through the adequate yearly progress, the AIP. So, once, if you did not meet that, then a school had further actions to do to meet the standards around that. But it was mainly still about reading and mathematics was the focus. And then ed quality standards was 2014. The ed quality standards is where we have the proficiency-based learning and the personalized learning plans and the things that Vermont were doing now within that, which are all great things, just a lot of work. And Act 77 with flexible pathways. So then, now, with that, we have to do the continuous improvement plan and for all schools and districts. So that's why we have the, actually, all 10. So we will hopefully do one as a district, and the schools can align to that and maybe take a different journey, but we'll have the same outcomes as a district. And that, that's our hope. And now, with every Student Succeeds Act, which came along in 2016, they require the agency to establish the accountability and improvement systems. So, and they leave a lot with the state. So what, in Vermont, we're lucky, because we didn't then swing again. We, our agency has been working with our ed quality standards and tweaking them some to meet the requirements for the federal government. So, and that's been really nice, and the agency is pretty clear that's what they're doing. When we were at this meeting, whenever it was, last week maybe, Amy Fowler, the deputy secretary, said, "Really, our jobs as a district and schools are really to follow the ed quality standards, because everything we're doing in the ed quality standards meets ESSA." So that was good to hear, there's nothing else beyond. It's really what, and Vermont's doing a great job. And other states are looking to see what we do. And I always love working in Vermont in education, because the eyes are on us for the great things that we do. So under state assessments, we have the new standards of reference exam in grades four, eight, and 10. And I was a very lucky teacher that gave that in fourth grade. And then 2002, we moved to the Kneecap, which was three through eight, and then one grade in high school. And then we moved in 2014, and then we give, actually, oh yeah, into the Sback. So, and the Sback was 2013. There were any changes within that. So the ed quality standards, we still have the state testing. Every Student Succeeds Act, the same testing grade levels are required to meet. And then Vermont has chosen to test Sback in ninth grade instead of skipping from eighth to 11th, and then looking at what can be given at 11th. So as juniors, as you know, a lot of kids are taking tests for college, and then they, the Sback just kind of, I think it's an attitude thing, and I really don't blame them. It's a year that you, they're tested a lot. So, that's great. And what this will also help us to do is to see a child in a continuous growth pattern from third grade all the way up to ninth grade. And that'll help also with aligning from our middle schools into high school. So we've ne, we haven't had that before, and so that's, I'm really happy that they've changed it to ninth grade. Plus, the kids are in the habit of doing it. So I think, I think we'll see better results.
Question?
Yeah.
On the other side, the last one, it's adding a physical fitness exam. Is that inclusive of all the grades? Or is it just only for those that are required to take, is it two years? Because they still haven't moved it to four.
Right, it is required for those who are required to take it.
So then the other students would not be taking it if they met the, fulfilled the requirement?
That's my understanding, that that could change. Or my understanding could change, but I'll let you know if it does. So when, I think it's going to be the same thing in those same kind of grades. So I don't know what, they won't test the younger children in the physical fitness. It should start in third grade also. And with the ed quality standards, I'll show you in a little bit of all the other things that will be, will be tested on as they come to look at us and for their school reviews that we'll have done. Kim?
Just to clarify on Andre's question, is that annual physical fitness exam in what we just described, Sback, to be third through ninth? Is that?
That's what I'm thinking it is, yes. Yeah, yeah. So then the school accountability, it's, in 1997, with Act 60 and 68, it was a rolling two-year average for students, and it was state and local assessments. And then with No Child Left Behind, they started to look at subgroup results. And sometimes the subgroups are so small that we can't actually report out on them when you have a small school. Or, yeah, with some, even classes, you can't do that. And I've worked at schools that you can't even count the results, because the schools are so, the classes are so small. But that is an annual, the No Child Left Behind was on an annual assessment. And then with the ed quality standards, again, looking at Sback also. But then they've added the, an annual snapshot of state data. So we have to turn our data into the state on yearly basis now, which requires us to have a data system, one data system across the school district, so that can feed to the state. And then they will be doing field reviews every three years. And our field review, where they'll come and spend one day, field review for 10 school, no, it'll be nine schools, not the current test, in the district, is one day, I can't believe that, but it's every three years, and it begins in 1819. So we are, Amy and I are preparing even now to start to talk about that with the leadership team. So when they come, I'll show you in a minute of the kinds of things that they will look at when they come, and how they'll measure how we're doing in different areas. Yes?
Do you, I remember going to a session with Amy at a VSBA annual meeting, and I think you have to submit a lot of your data ahead of time.
Yes.
So when they come for the day, they're prepared with certain things and areas that you'll look at.
And focused questions for us around that data, absolutely. And then every Student Succeeds Act also focuses on the lowest 5% performing schools. So, it, a big chunk of, when we had Nickelby, it was like every school in Vermont was identified as needing school improvement. Yeah, yeah, and then, then that switched some, which is great, because Vermont switched that first. And then they do, are adding some new subgroups for accountability. So here are the five domains that when we need to be accountable to. So it's not, again, it's not just the reading and math that we used to be accountable for, which is awesome, because now we're looking at a whole system as we should, a whole child, and not just in reading and mathematics. So, here are the next one, I'm going to go down through each one of these. So in the academics, here's the academic areas that they will look at each of our schools at when they come for the review, and things that we have to be held accountable on. And I'm glad that it has gone into other areas of subjects and not just the reading and the mathematics. And that graduation rate is still in there as a high one to look at. So, looking at PBIS and then, and restorative practices and those kind of things. And the state's very interested in both of those, and that's good, because we're doing those things. We'll be collecting more data on that.
Is the state going to do a climate survey?
They expect us to do it. They have, I don't think they have the sample yet to come out. They keep saying that they're going to create the sample, maybe it's there, but I haven't seen it yet, for us to give, gather the data, and then we give it to the state.
Right, but there's going to be a statewide, because we have in the past paid for our own.
Yeah.
And, so hopefully now
Hopefully.
we won't have to pay for it.
And, well, I've been hearing about this survey for maybe three years now, so hopefully. Yeah, and then the high-quality staffing. This is where you can hold me accountable to, to make sure that our teachers are licensed, and that, that we have a stable staff that stays. And then they'll also have satisfaction surveys, which is great, to ask teachers, all staff, on how they are with the, and especially now with the new district, I think that would be really, I'd like to give it right now, if I have it in my hands. And then here's, so here's where we need to focus, and I think that this is a big piece for the board to hold us accountable to, and you heard it at the VSBA regional meeting, that the, the staff ratios, and then the expenditures per student, and what that is, and to try to decrease that, and then returns on the investment. So that's your responsibility too, to hold us accountable to those. That, those are all the five areas that they'll be looking at when they, in 1819, when they swoop in for a day. So, the continuous improvement plans, I just wanted to go a little into this, but we're not going to get into the real detail. Phase one, the needs assessment and being innovative with that is due in March. So what that requires, I think it's on the next slide. Yes. So, we need a shared vision, which is perfect. And I said to the Agency of Education, "So we're working on our vision," and they told me I could put draft, but it definitely is a shared vision. And then the stakeholders that had to do with that vision, and also the stakeholders, and who did we involve in that, and also in the, to a continuous improvement plan. And I am really excited to report on how many people had input from the Voices for Education and all those community members, because that's really going to drive our vision. And then the broad areas of focus. So once we have that vision, and I call it that North Star, I've talked to the leadership team, and I've been saying this since I was with them in the summer, that that vision will help us decide where we're going and what we need to focus on, and some broad goals. So this is exactly what we've been doing with the leadership team and getting to that point, so, perfect. Now we just are accountable to it too. And then, once we look at data and needs assessment, we will then look at some problems of practice, they're called now in research. So where do we think we need some improvement, and what's the data telling us? And all the data that we collect. So some of those surveys would be really helpful in this work too, to guide that work. We have to do a root cause analysis, and Amy kind of groaned at that one, and I'd love to do root cause analysis, to figure out, so why is that a problem? Why is that then a practice? And then to really drill down on, on what that is, and then to write a goal, write a theory of action. This is my favorite work, just so you know. Every piece of it, including the vision especially, but then that data and looking at that. That's how you move a system forward. So it's really nice that Vermont is really taking this action in this way, and it's a scientific evidence we need, it's how businesses improve, and now it's finally like, oh yay. And this is the template that they say you don't have to use, or loosely use, but you're going to use it, because it's perfect. So this is due in March. And then, yeah, that just gives you an idea in your handout. We don't, I don't have to go all through that, but it lets you know. So you write the goal, you test pilot it, then you have to go through, is it working? Why is it working? What's not working? And then you revamp that. So it's that whole continuous cycle, which is great. So here's how we're responding, and you're responding. So, the policies, you have adopted some, and some we're working on, and with related procedures. We're continuing the vision work, as you know, with staff, students, families, community members. And then we're working with the student leaders on the individual needs assessment, so for their schools, and then also district-wide. And we've started those conversations at our last meeting with the principals to think about what's the first needs assessment we can start to look at, and looking at it as a lens from the district level, which is very different to put that lens cap on and not just your school when you're a principal, but to really come out and look at it from a 30,000-foot, and to see where, where we need to improve as a system. And then how do you help one another? If one school's really good at something, how do they help other schools to get there too? And learn from each other, which is exciting work. Can you tell I love what I'm doing? And then, to participate in the state trainings, which Amy and I are going to, to figure out this continuous improvement plan and how we go about it. And then we'll bring them to you in May, late May, beginning of June. And I'll, we'll let you know, and I'll keep you updated on where we're at with the Agency of Education, and if they have any other requirements as we go. The other two handouts just go a little more. One goes into a little more about the journey of our accountable system, this little trail. And then the other one goes into more detail, the snapshot, just so you have copies of those. Do you have any overall questions for me?
Any questions?
My question is a little different. I have been tracking the Free and Reduced and group for many years, and looking at the state scores, looking at our schools. We really, overall, I haven't seen a whole lot of movement in the needle. How is this approach going to help that group of students to do better?
Well, I don't think that this approach, the continuous, well, the continuous improvement plan can help with our gap, and I'll get to that in a second. But the approach of looking at all those five domains and areas will help us with all students. So I think it has a better picture on our system as we move forward. The gap, we are, Amy and I had a great conversation today about that achievement gap and one of those groups. Now, in October, Amy's going to bring data, and we'll present that. And that's a great topic for that, because that's exactly where we need to focus.
But clearly, that has been an area of focus for me over the last five years.
Yeah, and it is everywhere. And Rebecca Holcomb speaks to it all the time, but it, that doesn't matter that it's everywhere. We still, we have it here, and we'll need to figure out. And that may be a big chunk of our continuous improvement plan. It should be, and that's part of the equity too.
Right. And I haven't seen any other school district in our county, because I watch our county, make any improve, any significant improvements. And the state of Vermont, last week, article on decreasing scores throughout the state is another concern as well.
Yeah, so when we look at the data, and you know, what's shared with public, and, and you'll see it next, next time, when we look at the data, is the percentage of students meeting standards and below, and all of that. It's the, and it's, or being proficient, and what's that. But it also, what we need to do as educational leaders is really look at the scaled score, which is the score that you get within, like, if they're proficient or not. So within proficiency, there's a wide band, right, of scaled score. We need to look at individual students and scaled scores to make sure that they're ma, making and maintaining growth. So, that's great work to do, and I can't wait to dig into it, since we just received it. And that's what I asked Amy, and I don't know if it'll be ready in October, it depends on the time that we have. She's putting a lot of data together for you. But I also would like to present, and I don't think it can be in October, but like to present those students that we know gained a year or more, but didn't meet proficient yet, but they're gaining. And that's really important data, and that helps with the gap. That's really talking about the kids that you're asking about. Yeah, Kim?
Keely?
Another part of that, I'd be interested to know how we do with students' growth, depending on how many years they were in our system.
Yeah.
Because economic poverty and housing instability tend to go together. And so, if poor children are moving from district to district every year, then they're less likely to gain the benefits of whatever system they're in.
So we can track that, and that'll be part of the data that we look at. I also have asked, listening to your question, I think it was at the last meeting, asking about demographic data. So we have a lot of that to present to you. And even, like, how many ELL students we have, and how many speaking this language. And I mean, that all, that, all that data is so important, even before we get to the academic data, to understand who we are as a district. So I have her researching that and doing that kind of data. I'm almost thinking that it might have to be two separate, like, let's look at who we are, and then the next time, let's see where we are with academics.
Andre?
With the retrieval of the data, there's probably not a way to track students that leave the district as to whether they are more successful in outlying districts or not? Because I think that's also
Yeah.
important measurement, if they're not succeeding here.
Someday maybe, I mean, the state is supposed to be coming up with a data system that will track students.
That's another one we've been waiting for.
I've heard that that was happening for the last six years, so, we'll see.
And they want that same kind of data, so, yeah. That would be very interesting.
But it's really, I think it's a really important point. Do you remember when our school board chairman, Trappa, had Amy do that for just one group of kids in Westford? And it was amazing how few kids, even in our system, stayed in the system from third grade through eighth grade. It was a pretty small number. So, it is something to think about, an important point, Keely. So, ESSA, questions, comments?
Martha?
I just want to say I love how you did the presentation, the years breaking it down. I've been doing this a long time, and it just feels like every few years, we're getting going on something, and let me just change again. And my husband is one of those that keeps saying, "Are you changing all these things?" Just so that we taxpayers can't keep up with how you're doing.
Well, I have to thank Amy Cole, because she had a big part in this presentation. Since we went together, I dragged her into helping me make this. And I have to tell you, that was so nice this weekend. I sat down to really work on this, and she had, like, the whole draft on. I'm like, oh my gosh, it's so fun to have people.
Amy, compliment to them collaborating. Andre?
I'm going to ask about the class size, where it must comply with state and federal safety. Who wins the argument if they're different?
They're really not, because our guidelines for ed quality standards have to find, follow the federal, so.
So they're the overarching, okay, thank you.
So I suppose part of that work is that our districts may have had different policies.
Exactly, yeah.
So we have to bring all that to, have to hurt.
And different perception of the policy, you know, just different kind of like mindsets around that. So that's why we brought the leadership team, principals, together, and we have many that are volunteering to work on that. And it's great, from both systems to, yeah, one system that we can agree on.
So, at some point, will you bring that? So at some point will you bring that to the policy committee before it comes to the board?
Yes.
Good. Kim and then Patrick.
The class size policy we have, it's required, but the staff ratio number, which is being spoken about more broadly at the state level, is not a number that we typically see in the context of our budgeting or otherwise.
I know.
And I'm just wondering if that's something that, given the focus, will be
I was doing that roughly on my calculator the other night.
They do, the state does send you those numbers that you have to put in your town report. And they do hit for similar sized schools. That's required. Um, I don't know who, how. I've always had trouble trying to access the databases that have that number in it. And as far as I know, those numbers don't come to us until after we finish the budget, which is, it may help the community look at us, but I don't know that it really helps with us, us when we're budgeting.
I think you have an estimated one, like I was doing on my phone the other night in my calculator. Um, but that number too has always kind of bothered me as a teacher because it's not a classroom teacher size. It's everybody in your school compared to a student, so.
And based, and based on how people count too.
Yes, yes.
But they do, they do have several, they do have a classroom teacher to student. They do have an all certified staff to student, then all staff to student. And they have an administrator to student ratio.
I was referring more to the one that Kim was talking about from the presentation the other night.
That they're wonderful or otherwise it's being spoken about.
Right, I've got Patrick and he'll come back to you.
Uh, so the Vermont quality standards for the most part make or exceed ESA, correct?
Yes, yes.
Um, do you, I'm sort of asking you guys maybe looking into a crystal ball a little bit, but with the new administration, do you anticipate that ESA is going to change at any point in the next few years, maybe a year, I mean, depending on
It's brand new.
changes, right. I know, I know that this is very new, but I know it's.
There, I guess they could always tweak it. I, I hope not, but I don't know.
My sense is that committee has a lot of work in other areas that they have not accomplished, like the Higher Ed Act, which was supposed to be renewed several years ago. And so unless somebody really thinks there's something wrong with it that gets into power, I wouldn't think so.
Yeah, we just have to keep um plugging away for public schools.
Right, yes. Very important. Kim?
I was thinking about that staff ratio thing in your comment, Martha. I think one of the things that'll be interesting to see, um, I recall from our RED study that the SU staff were not considered in the ratios with respect to administration. And when we are a school district, because Essex Towns reported out, including the central office staff, as would any other school district.
Right.
But the SU's central office staff are not considered part of the um school district ratio. No, no, it wasn't. And as a matter of fact, it was like a footnote on the report for that reason because it looked disparate. And it completely excluded the entirety of the central office staff that was servicing the buildings.
Which gets even more distorted because we've made all the special educators moved to the central office.
Absolutely. So it would seem as though good, bad or otherwise, as unification happens, we'll get to a place of more clarity regarding ratios um across the state. Exactly. It's not, there's so many areas where we're not able to compare and report out because of the N size or otherwise that I think will benefit from the unifications that have happened.
Okay, let us, questions or comments? Thank you very much, Beth. A big part of our work to come. Okay, so we'll move on to school board business. And Beth, I think you're on, there we go. So Beth had told us last time that she would take the statements that, or the, yeah, work we had done at the retreat and turn them into some board goals that we could have at the top of our work plan. So um, this is what Beth has done. Maybe you can read them quickly.
I just gave them all away. I actually, I'm
Here you go, Beth, so I can.
So um, Beth, I don't, maybe you should go through them and then we'll see if people have any questions or comments.
Okay, so what I did was to take your, you actually ended up with like six words on a chart of your focus areas. And then I took those focus areas and created a goal from them. So in the first one, your focus area or word was equity. So I created a, a goal around that. Um, and I do think that's really important. And for this goal, I can continue or I will be bringing data and we're talking about it all the time. So I can continue to bring that to you. And then um the state and federal requirements was a focus area. So.
Started that tonight.
Started that tonight. Um, and then, let's see, the other one was about budget and, oh no, it was consolidation. And so we worked on the student opportunities and the financial benefits for those, for that goal, to include that when we talk about it with you about consolidation. And we have said that we would continue to put that on the agenda. And then about involving the community in a budget process was the focus. And then the last one was to monitor growth of students. That one. And then the next one was the vision piece. So we just took your focus areas and created six goals for you.
So do these sound right to folks? Is this what we want the focus of our work to be this year? Yes, okay, some head nods by me.
And those focus areas also end up coming out in that calendar of work.
Right. Kim?
Um, I, I think these work for this year and I think in a future year, I would appreciate seeing us describe, engage with the community on things other than just the budget process. So I think that is hit for me by number six, where it is part of the getting to the vision process. So um if we wanted to either expand six to describe it as it is, engage with stakeholders, um, to adopt a vision by the end of whatever would be language, it feels like what we're doing, it represents our process. And then the only other thing I might suggest is that these are the right targets for our board meetings. If there are other things we're doing there that aren't board meeting related, like the October meetings or areas that are meeting our goals, whether it's through Voices for Education or um or other things where we're going out to the community or sponsoring an event out in a community that isn't about our board. This is awesome for helping us with our agenda planning. Um, and if it's not this year, it might be some point at which our calendar is expanded to include non-board meeting topics that are meeting the goals.
Al?
Um, one other area that has to do with the synchronization, synchronization of curriculum across the district. Uh, I know there are pockets of differences here and there, but seeing that that work is on track and that we're making progress and it will be evolving over time, I, I think we should keep that in the back of our mind too. Uh, just, just a thought.
Well, I, I think a lot of us saw that equity goal as encompassing that work.
I haven't gotten the definition, your definition.
Like what an equity includes.
Well, we're gonna have a discussion.
We're getting there. No, I was just gonna say the equity piece is, when I'm reading the literature Beth already sent us and from going to the state conference last year, it's interesting how my viewpoint has changed about how every school has to look alike. Because some schools, like for instance, I'll take Summit Street, maybe you have a percentage of students that are more of the free and reduced lunch students versus, I'm not saying they are, versus Hiawatha, but that's a very good place that we can compare. So maybe all these years that, when I was on the PC and we're trying to even everything out between the schools, maybe we didn't do a great favor to them. This, this is gonna be interesting when we talk about it.
Things that, yeah, and sometimes there are other ways to meet the same um academic goal.
Right.
Right. But it's a big part of what we're gonna have to be thinking about and working on.
I also think the, the piece that's gonna come out, I'm hoping, is through our budget process of what's in the schools or not in the schools, like that list.
Like the kind of equity and, and sorry, is what, what we have talked about in the past. Yeah. We're not probably gonna be able to address all of it in a single year, but we need to start being cognizant of where we need to be making some gains. Kim, did you have your handout?
I was just gonna say, I could see the, the thoughts around curriculum alignment, which I think some, in some ways happens by virtue of the Common Core, that things are being taught at the same grades and the same ages. But how is that being implemented across the buildings? I, I could see it also falling under the continue to keep abreast of student opportunities and financial benefits of the consolidation.
Yes, that's true.
Feel as though that could be um an indicator there as well.
Okay, any final comments or thoughts? Thank you, Beth.
You're welcome. So I will rework the vision once it includes engaging students.
I just have one comment and it doesn't have to be answered now, but the Voices group has been talking in that, last night, we said December twelfth as the, as the board meeting, that we were gonna report out at. Um, but we had said November earlier and I was noticing on this calendar it says November. Um, we can do the November twenty eighth day and get that on our calendar for the Voices group, if that would work. Would that, that gives the Voices group a little bit more time to present all that information. So if it, if, just to get that on, if we do that Voices report out.
That's the third week in November?
That, no, December, yeah, that's the second, that's, that according to I think, don't we have a meeting on December twelfth and uh?
Oh, I thought you said November. I'm sorry. I heard November.
I did say November. Novem, oh, I have
Are you talking about school board meeting?
November twenty eighth as a school board meeting for us. Does ever, anybody else have that? Thanksgiving is on the twenty third this year.
The twenty first this year is scheduled meeting. I can't remember how it changed.
Okay, uh, anyway, the later November or, just, we don't have to do this now, but the later November or the early December date for us would be best for Voices.
December, it's the fifth, so. It's what I have. Huh?
It, I, I think at this point in time, it's still a little bit of like six of one. It's
If giving Voices a little bit more time.
We want more time, but it's whatever works.
So we'll try to move it to December.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? All right, thank you. So, thank you, Brian. All right, district management um group pers, pers, participation. There we go. Spit it out, Martha. Um, so who, you may recall that we had this discussion last year and may, we never voted on it as a board, but um you've received materials. And we made a conscious decision not to join Group One um for a few different reasons, but probably the biggest one being the quantity of work that was facing um people in our district. Um, so Beth is um bringing it back to the table and I'll turn it over to you, Beth, to explain.
Okay. So um Brian and I have talked a lot about this and we have gone back and forth whether this is the right thing to do. We've watched a webinar, um, and I've had conversations. I think the thing that persuaded me the most was to have conversations with superintendents that are in cohort one. Um, even though there's different district sizes in cohort one, they all have found it really beneficial, especially because of the person that's leading it. And she's a retired superintendent from Massachusetts, large districts. And right sizing districts, figuring out equity in districts, um, and just each, so you go in and you will, you have your own action plan.
I'm stuck with Patrick plus no more.
I was gonna, could I get a clip, like a super clip, no thirty seconds version of what this is?
Sorry, so the district, the district management group is a company um that works with districts in Vermont and Vermont School Board Association and the Superintendent's Association brought this group to us um, a couple of years ago. And it was first around special education and looking at special education districts, which um we did that. We have, now have a draft report on the outcomes of that. This one is a little different though. This, um, so it's an outside source that would come in and give a third view on things for us. Um, and help us, help me and Brian too, in, in a cohort, to really focus in on some things that we need to do. One of the things that I would really like their support and help on is right sizing district office, which I think would be beneficial, politically correct, great thing to do, to right size that. Um, and again, the superintendent that's working with us is from a larger system. So it would be nice to be able to see what other districts our size do and um are, how efficient are they? And um, so that is one reason that I would like to, and also the equity issue. There is a district that's looking at equity. Some of the districts that are in cohort one are using it for their leadership team to pull them together. We don't need that. Our leadership team is a, the principals are a very tight group. It's awesome. Um, or vision writing and things that we're already doing and doing well, I think. Um, but when I started to hear about some of the other things, I could, I think, I think it would be beneficial to us. I also feel in the state of Vermont that we're really being watched as one of the largest districts coming together. And I think politically for us, I think it's a good move to work with this group. Um, yeah, so those are my reasons. And it's the twenty thousand dollars over three years and you can do that however we decide that, to, to spread that out. Um, you can do as little as possible. This first year, the first meeting I thought was towards the end of September, but we're getting towards the end of September and I don't know the date.
I think one, one of the real positives from client perspective is that it, even the cohort group and the leader is coming from scales, scales and scope outside of Vermont, coming from that, a Massachusetts perspective, which I think is really helpful when we, when we look, because we're, we now are resembling a little bit of some, some of the very small towns within Massachusetts opposed to where like even our largest size um hasn't been to that degree. And it's just helpful. Might as well look at somebody that's been doing it for fifty or seventy-five years to see what corners they've been able to cut off and make things smoother, so.
Yeah, a, a similar point is it has been very valuable to this school when we went outside. Um, I can think of my experience on the security audit that you were on. I mean, the, it, it just opens up your eyes to, to things that you never really thought about. And the, and working with multiple schools to have insight into what works.
Yeah, absolutely.
So it's, I, I would support the initiative.
So, um, Andre, you?
Um, is this a three-year commitment if it, in other words, if it's not?
Um, is this a three-year commitment, if it, in other words, if it's not having the desired outcomes, can we bail out early?
I don't know the answer to that, I did not ask that question. It's a good question, though.
Thank you.
Um, I had some concerns about this, but we discussed it in February or March, which I was supposed to write up for you, but things that don't have a deadline simply have not happened for me this year. Um, so I think I, that the work sounds like a good idea, and that outside perspectives sound like a good idea. But I have concerns about the organization and its corporate leadership team. Um, in terms of the organization, it seems to be a standard startup with Harvard Business School plans, which is sell someone's knowledge and expertise, and they probably aren't just looking for twenty thousand dollars. Um, this is an opportunity for them to get to know our, our organization and where they could sell us more additional services in the future, um, which probably won't cost twenty thousand dollars. Um, it just, like, I'm glad to hear that somebody other than the founder is the person we would be working with, because, um, he, when I was living in the next town over in Massachusetts, was basically ousted from his district for ethically questionable activities. Um, so I have kind of a range of concerns about this organization.
So I would say that, um, the work with District Management Council in Vermont has been done at a state level as opposed to an individual district level. So I think anything that might be sold is gonna be sold at the state level as opposed to an individual district. So they have been contracted with, by the state to do some special ed audits, and they, those audits were done by specialists in field, not by me himself. And, um, this is a pe- a piece of what is encouraging me now is hearing about the person that they've hired to do this particular, um, project. Sounds like she's someone who could really be valuable. Um, I'm glad that Beth and Brian have talked to districts who were in Group One. Um, it gives me a little co- more confidence to know that they felt it was valuable. I wasn't excited about being in that first group.
I wasn't either, and I can even say that I approached Brian and said, you wanna watch this webinar? I, I, seriously, and even after the webinar, we were like, mm. Um, but the more. I'm glad that Jeff Francis, I gave him very pos- uh, honest feedback, it wasn't positive, it was honest, critical feedback, um, and he said, I just want you to reach out to your colleagues as superintendents to ask them, which, and he said, I'm not trying to sell it, I just am here to support you, and I would like you to do that. So I did that, um, and then emailed the superintendent from Massachusetts to get her to, and I right off was like, oh, I think I've changed my mind. But I was not crazy about the idea first.
What's her name?
Carla Bear.
I just spelled her last name.
I think it's B A U E R.
R E U R, I know, okay.
Yeah, it's a different, it's not like they're, they're.
Or naked.
Yeah.
Um, I was encouraged to think we were revisiting the situation at a time that was better suited for our organization, especially, um, the notion that there's an out-of-state resource. I think sort of early on when we had the opportunity of Dan French help, supporting us as a project manager, I think there was some hope, at least on my part, that we would have some vision into outside of Vermont, because we are among the largest, and it's hard to find our peer organization that's gonna bring what is the right size in particular, as I was thinking about it, but that they can also bring us to some productive conversation around equity that, and it's what it might look like in a district of the size, which for Massachusetts would be small, but certainly for Vermont, we're large, and we don't really have just yet a peer organization that's already pulled this together, that can help inform this work. So I was encouraged, especially hearing from you, um, what the other experiences have been.
Right, right.
That this could serve us really well and satisfy something I, I think we're somewhat craving is perspective on what makes sense.
Martha? I was, uh, interested in seeing this and doing it just because I know we have the two district offices, we have two different staffs, support staffs for district offices coming into one, and I think having that outside focus is going to be valuable if certain positions are suggested to be eliminated, 'cause I think with having a new superintendent in the district, I think it puts, um, a new superintendent in a terrible position to have to let people know if certain positions aren't, are not going to happen, or if they're eliminated. And that's what the superintendent is supposed to do, that's what we hired them for, but I think that outside person takes some pressure off politically.
Yeah. Keely?
I mean, normally if we wanted to hire an outside consultant to provide this type of input, we would review several proposals, right? Rather than just taking the one that has really tried to get people to do it. I mean, I just, I, I think the idea is great, I think getting outside perspective is great. Massachusetts has a completely different school funding system, but in many other ways is in our region in terms of approaches and priorities in education, but I just really have bad feelings about this organization.
So who, I, um, I think it's correct to say that this work is being partially subsidized by the SBA and VSA, so if we had to go out on our own, I think it would be more expensive, um.
I think it's actually a grant through Visbit, um, and it's that triumvirate of organizations that are sort of overseeing the work. It was, um, because the capacity to move districts from study to implementation on unification, there really wasn't that, um, sort of outside expertise, I think, to bring to it in the same way. There were folks who could support the study work, and that, that project group existed. So the project group doesn't exist anymore, but, um, Visbit is substantially subsidizing this cohort work with the, the, um, opportunity to see the realization of what unification was expected to bring to school districts. So Visbit has an interest from that standpoint.
And was there a bidding process for that, when they chose?
I actually don't know, I don't sit on that board, um, and on the VSBA board, it's through the Visbit grant. Um, but I think that DMG or District Management Council had done some work that's been well-regarded around special ed and has come to understand Vermont education through that process. I think, um, maybe even some work around financing and budgeting. I'm not exactly positive on that end, but I think that this wasn't sort of the first time they were approaching Vermont education work. It was coming off of their work around special ed, I think, that this was another area they could provide support, at least from what I understood. We went to something in Randolph, maybe, or at Norwich?
Norwich, well.
And I forget what that group was about. Honestly, I, I, I think it was around governance or something, around engagement and govern- governance.
Yeah.
Um, so they've, I think they've spent some time trying to figure it out and understand the nuances of Vermont education. So I'm not sure what their experience was, or, or what the history is of the organization, just what I know of what I've heard of them over the last several years working in or around our districts, actually, with respect to special ed.
Yes.
Are you looking for a vote on this tonight?
If, if.
Is there a time issue?
Yes.
There is.
Good.
Other questions or comments? All right, I'll entertain a motion that we, um, participate in, um, Group Two of the District Management Group work on, um, I guess we'll call it Act Forty-Six implementation at the state level.
So.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay. So Keely and Andre voted no. Kim, do you have that? Okay.
Okay, so we have a six to two vote?
Yes.
So one and a half?
No.
Oh, that's right.
No. Yes, yeah. Okay, let's move on to task team updates. Liz and Patrick, do you wanna start?
Sure, uh, communications has been all about Voices for, since we last met. Um, for the, for our group, we're gonna schedule a meeting for that, for the next, uh, planning that we talked about last time, for an overall communication strategy. But this, uh, work in the last couple of weeks has been all about the Voices. Tomorrow night, I hope you all have on your calendars is the big launch party. Superintendent will be there, come on out and have some cupcakes, and, uh, it's really a time to celebrate the work that we've done. We did end up speaking to more than three hundred people. We have a really, it's really getting exciting now, because we have been planning for so long, and now we're at the stage where we're really diving in. We've got a really great and committed group of people who are moving this work forward. So, um, thanks to everyone who's been a part of that, and especially to Beth and Brian, who have brought to this group a really great, uh, priority of aligning the work that Voices is doing. Just having a real eye and ear for making sure that what the Voices group is doing is well-aligned with what's happening in the district, and that's been really important, so, so thanks for that. Um, on Saturday is, uh, the facilitator training for the upcoming October conversations. We have, uh, seven adults and five students who are gonna be trained to make these conversations happen, so that's great. We are still in desperate need of, um, participants for the conversations. We have, we need about sixty people, um, that's our, our target number. So I guess I will take this opportunity, there's some, this is all on, on the website and all over, but, but, um, these are floating around, information about what they're about, and I would just make an ask to the board now, and, um, if you could share this as much as you can and try to use your own personal networks and connections to, uh, reach out to folks, that would be great. And if it's okay, I could share the spreadsheet that you can add names that you reach out to, just it's super easy, organized way to just say you reached out to this person, sent them an email, so we can continue to collect that information. So if the board is willing to do that, I'm happy to send that email and see if we can, um, get people to participate in those October conversations. Yes, send it.
Liz, um, you also send your, um, sample letter and the flyer, just.
Sure.
I've not necessarily used it verbatim, but it's really helpful to have.
Yeah, so Kim's talking about the materials that will accompany that email that I'll send to you, um, which will give a little bit of script about what we're asking for, the details of what the ask is, how much time is gonna be required of participants, and, um, so that when you reach out to people, you'll have a real sense of, of what we're asking for. And I'll, I'll send that all, and I'll just forward, that was sent out to the planning team today, I'll just forward that to the board members, so you will, you guys will all have that information.
Good.
And again, and then October, again, is the big conversation time, so.
So you're saying there will be some kind of spreadsheet? So for instance, if I'm thinking about contacting someone, I'll be able to know if Mark Draper has already talked to them?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, are there any, um, types of people that we already have enough of, and we don't need to contact? Like if I know teenagers at church, I shouldn't ask them, 'cause you already have enough students or something?
So you'll see the way the spreadsheet is, I could put it up there if people are interested in looking at it, but you'll see when, um, that there's an affiliation column that's listed right on there, and so you would fill in in that. So there's a parent guardian, there's a student, there's, you'll see that we've put it up in ways that we're looking to fill certain demographics. So if you find that all the parent guardians' slips are full, which there's a couple left, then we don't need more people there, but, so look to fill in the places that are not there. Oh, thanks, Brian, it's that community conversations tab in the middle there, yeah. So you'll see, um, here we are, and then if you do, it's pretty, it's easy, and you'll just fill in as you go, and again, it'll say who contacted that person, and, and there's some notes if you had a conversation, or, um.
The drop-down menu.
The drop-down menu, and some, in some, so you'll see, if that's a good example with me, I got a response that said maybe, it says the date I emailed the person, and, and it said for a participant, there's also, if you scroll all the way down, you get to where the facilitators are, but, um, it's really easy, and if anyone has any questions, just let me know, because it's, um, and it is a way to track who has reached out. If you look at that invited line all the way to the right of the screen now, you can see, um, how we're doing that.
Also to get a commitment either Wednesday or Thursday, so it has a.
Oh, yeah.
So they just commit to one of the.
Yeah.
A Wednesday or Thursdays through October.
There's an option for Wednesday or Thursday or both for your availability, because we, that's, we're, we're trying to schedule the groups based on facilitator and participant availability on Wednesdays or Thursdays. So again, totally, uh, it's really self-explanatory, but we just explained it, so it's even easier. And, uh, if you have any questions, just let me know, I'm happy to help.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay. Is that it, from Communications? Okay, great, and thank you for the work you're doing. Uh, it's a good time to again thank Ben for the work he's doing. I'm really impressed with the website and the app, and, um, it, it just seems like Communication has, it's never enough. Somebody's always gonna have a complaint, but it seems really good right now, so. Okay, then we have superintendent evaluation.
And supervision.
And supervision.
Martha?
Beth and I met on September twelfth before our evening meeting with the whole board that night, and we finally, uh, Beth had brought and, uh, contacted other districts and supervisor unions, and so we looked at some job descriptions, and it was really interesting that in Chittenden County, they almost all look alike. They, the format, exactly what the, is in the job description. So we took one of the formats, we liked one of the job descriptions, and Beth is looking at what pieces are missing that, uh, among all of them. And we're going to meet on Wednesday, the twenty-seventh, at five-thirty, tentatively over at the West Office, and we're gonna finalize hopefully the job description and update the superintendent evaluation that's coming to the board for October third.
The materials.
Yeah.
The materials. Yeah. Questions? Comments? Okay, great. Let's move on, um, so, um, I thought since the resolutions would be fresh in Vermont since most of us went to the regional meeting last Monday, that this would be a good time to vote on those resolutions. At our first meeting in October, we'll be talking about who's going to the annual meeting and who's going to vote for this board. Other people can certainly attend the meeting and take part in the discussion, but you can only have one person who votes. So who are conclusions about the resolutions tonight? If we can reach conclusions, um, are what will guide the person who's voting. Now, there can be things that come up at the meeting, there can be amendments that change the. Now, there can be things that come up at the meeting, there can be amendments that change the resolution in a way we can't anticipate. So what I'm looking for tonight is not for us to pick apart every detail of the resolution, but to talk about whether we agree with the concept or, and is there anything that should be taken out or added to the concept on a high level, on a high plane level? Not on this word should be this and that word should be that kind of level unless it's substantive. So Brian, did you find? Okay. They should be online, Kim.
Well, I, I think I sent you Brian.
So everyone was at that meeting except for Keely. Does, did anybody else bring their booklets so we could give a booklet to Keely?
We got Liz's booklet.
Yeah?
That's the first one. Okay. So the first one was to author, authorize the creation of school district innovations. Does that seem like a good idea to folks? Seems to make a lot of sense. Isn't saying that there will ever, ever be one, but it gives districts an opportunity to either by themselves or in conjunction with a group of other districts, come up with different ways to meet regulations without hot meeting the specific regulation, the spirit of a regulation, Keely.
Did they have examples of types of regulation? It's like, as far as
Not, I can give you an example from Westford's past, maybe this will help. In the previous iteration of school quality standards, it's quite a while ago. One of the things you had to do was you had to offer consumer education, which was very much like the old home ec. And technical education, except it was called something else, to middle, middle school students. Well, that worked fine at ABL where they had a shop and they had other, and they had facilities for cooking and doing those kind of things. But it wasn't gonna work very well in Westford. So we asked for the regulation to be waived and we offered two units that we were gonna do with the students that would get at those learning standards, but without having a full-fledged. And one was a bridge building unit. And they built bridges with, what is it, probably popsicle sticks and, and I've forgotten what the second one was. But anyway, that's an example where you can find a more creative way and a less expensive way to meet the spirit of the regulation or the standard. All right, I'm, just so we can move through these, I'm gonna ask for a show of hands of everyone who thinks this is a reasonable resolution to pass. Okay. All right, so the second one is to establish a statewide health insurance benefit for school employees. This is, is that the second one you have? That's the second one that was in our book. This is hard, I think, maybe the hardest one actually. What do people think? Yes?
I think once you saw the inequity of what teachers' salaries were across the state versus Chittenden County, it made a lot of sense to me that there needs to be something that gets everybody on an equal playing field. So I think this is a great start. I think we're pitting districts against districts and we need to have one.
Other thoughts?
I agree with Marla, but I think there's some legal issues that are gonna be forthwith is how, how can the entity negotiate parts of a contract that are individual contracts? It's a statewide entity that's trying to impose parts of a contract and negotiate, so I think there's gonna be some legal skirmishes.
Yeah, of course, of course my comment and Andre and I have talked about this for years, it's, we should, if we're going in this direction, we should just have a statewide contract for compensation. Keely?
I'm afraid that that's why the Educators Association is not interested in a statewide health plan. Because in states that do have statewide teacher contracts, it is a real problem, I think, because in order to pay people something that the state can afford, they can't keep teachers in high cost of living areas. Whereas our problem is probably the opposite, that we can't keep teachers in low cost of living areas. And I think a big part that we can address would be the health insurance, because everybody uses the same few hospitals. So whether you live in a place where the cost of living is low or high, you still have to go and pay really high health costs. So I wish we could say like, we're just supporting this, because I don't support statewide salaries. I don't think that would necessarily work out well for anyone, but I think this could work out well for people.
And that's all that this resolution is addressing.
But that's all they're looking at is
Yes.
But I'm, I'm just saying that I'm, I think that the pushback from the teachers' unions against negotiating this at the state level is a fear that it will end up with a statewide teacher contract. Which, all my friends who are teachers in North Carolina like moved out of the state because they couldn't make over a certain amount of money, so.
Other comments? Kim?
I just, we're in a state that's described healthcare as a right, not a privilege. And I think that having that right be available equitably across the state makes sense. I think the idea that we are being impacted by the revenue reimbursement model based on what the state says is supposed to happen without there being, and I think among the most key components of this is that they'd be negotiated at the state level by a council of school board members. I think the biggest flaw in the legislation was that it was crafted without folks having had experience in actually negotiating contracts. So I think this current study group is also envoy to currently seated board members. And I think that that is where this focus is, that when it, this conversation comes again before the ex, required expiration in twenty nineteen, that there be support for a universal healthcare plan that would be negotiated by a council that includes school board members.
The addition that I suggested in our smaller group is with state assistance, because the state does negotiate the state employee's contract and including health insurance for state employees. And they have personnel that know how to do this, so rather than having to pay outside council to do it or having school districts have to pay for that, if the state was taking care of that, I think it would make sense. Does that make sense to folks? So who, we could, what if we put hands up saying that? Um, indicating who agrees with this resolution and indicating that we would like to add to the council of school board members state expertise or something like that. Okay, how many people agree with that? Okay, everyone but Patrick, okay. So I would say for the person voting, they could vote yes on this at the end.
On the floor, make the recommendation for the addition of state support or, you know, expertise.
Okay, so the next one is to establish, target equalized pupil to staff ratios and provide support to achieve those ratios. What kind of discussions did you have in your individual groups? Is there anything that came up that you think we should talk about? Andre?
I think what came up is how they determine the count.
Yes, I thought you, before we went into the smaller groups, I thought you raised a really important point that if one district contracts for bus services and custodial services and food service, those employees wouldn't get counted.
Right.
Where it was the district who provides them themselves. So that was the discussion we had in our group too, that there would have to be some definition around contracted services and how that was gonna be dealt with. But as to the bigger discussion here, I'll just say for myself, this is the biggest cost driver in education in the state of Vermont. And it is what needs to be talked about and addressed in some way. Martha?
Can some wording be developed as, for the person that would be there as a suggested, like on the past one that we just talked about? It would be nice if the wording was written down for the person standing there for the board with their suggestions.
Yeah, I think it's pretty easy to just stand up and say what we just said. That contracted services have to be part of the conversation, there has to be allowance for how things are counted based on how you provide services.
Can I go one step further? I think there is correlation between direct service versus indirect service. And I guess my mythology on that is, direct service would be services necessary for the students. Indirect would be more on the guise of overhead, that whether you have five hundred students or one student in the building, you'd still have to maintain the overhead. Um, it's, it's like, I, I guess the factory's
Would that be an example? Oh, you mean a, like a principal?
Our principal, administrative, custodial.
Two hundred students or five hundred students?
Right, I mean
The custodial is based pretty much on those size.
Yes, to some degree, but then extracurricular, is it, there's just a lot of different factors that come in and I think the definition is not well defined on this
I'd be happy to have them just start with a classroom
Absolutely.
Teacher to student ratio. Frankly. Yeah, Keely?
I understand the concerns about the declining student population, but that our staffing has certainly not declined. But I have a lot of misgivings about this, because I think in some ways, the way that additional staffing impacts students has changed over the years for the better. There were a lot of cruelties perpetrated on disabled or special needs students thirty years ago that have been addressed. I think for the better experience of all students in the classroom. And we can probably do things more efficiently, especially for advanced schools where you have a classroom teacher for like six people. But I would be really hesitant to make decisions on a numbers-based level rather than an outcomes-based level. I think districts might be tempted to say, oh, we'll do, you know, online education. And unless you have specific evidence that that online education can educate students and they can continue to receive the sort of relationship and mental health support that they get from interacting with actual, actual teachers, it isn't always gonna be a good trade-off.
Well, do you think our school quality standards help to address that concern? Plus, plus federal law, and when it comes to students with disabilities, there's, you'd have a hard time meeting a lot if you didn't have adequate personnel, personnel resources. I think that what this is trying to get at is trying to make school districts that do have six children in a classroom with a certified teacher to think about, is there a different way to do this? So in some ways, I think this is hard for us, because this is not an issue that we have. And yet, it is driving what it costs our taxpayers to pay for the education we provide to our students. So I agree, it's not completely straightforward. But, but I also think it is the only reasonable way to start looking at cost. And we certainly have very high cost in Vermont. Um, Kim?
Just looking for it now, but I believe we have another resolution on the books that is looking at the proper weighting for equalized people. And that partially addresses this, that there's different weighting for different categories of students. And so that's why equalized pupil to staff ratio is really important in this resolution to get to that. But separately, I'm pretty certain, an earlier resolution that the V S B A has adopted and continues to try and support the efforts in Montpelier on, are getting the proper weighting, because I think that we hear often from Burlington that E L L is not properly weighted for the resources required or different districts will have different concerns based on what they're seeing in experience to those weighted populations.
So I think what we heard last Monday night was that, that was a major topic that the legislature was interested in exploring. But the agency of education said, they'd asked them to do some kind of study and they said no. Isn't that what we heard? Yeah. Keely?
I guess rather than an average ratio of all staff, if what we're trying to target is the classroom teacher to student ratios and what that looks like, we already have policies that talk about like maximum class size for safety. Could they just institute a minimum class size? Like no less than ten people in a classroom?
Yeah. Well, the problem with that is unless some school districts change their configuration, they can't do it. Unless they consult with other districts so that they can become efficient, they can't do that. So I think this is trying to get at a financially They can't do that, so I think this is trying to get at a financial incentive to that would force you to look at, how can we deliver education more efficiently? There, there were, I don't, oh, the savings are here, yeah, she had some great information about savings. I think Marla was next, and then Kim.
When we talk about the equal as pupil tar- pupil target ratios though, and I'm sorry, I didn't feel good that night, I had to leave. So I missed that group discussions, but I'm assuming from watching the chart earlier that they're trying to move to a five to one ratio. And that includes not just a classroom teacher, that's talking about all your teachers, your F T Es, correct?
It's everything, it's custodians, bus drivers, administrators, it's everybody.
It is everybody. So that five, that chart they showed included that five to one, I thought that's just.
Um, no, I think classroom teacher to student ratio in the state is like maybe eight or nine to one. I don't remember. Um, but that's why Andre was raising all the issues he did. Um, just to move, to move the discussion along, would you be comfortable saying that looking at ratios is something that needs to be done in order to um affect the cost of education, but that it needs to be done carefully? Would you feel comfortable with saying that, you agree with the statement like that? Brian?
Maybe I'm just asking a question that came up, but when we talk about target ratios, there must be a discussion of what best practice is? Right, so I mean, when we're gonna target ratios, unless it's an arbitrary like less is what we're gonna be targeting, there has to be a best practice to review, what is the ratio that's required in best practice?
Well, the school quality standards used to have all the, those numbers in them. Um, for library, for classes, for special ed, for classrooms. Um, I frankly don't know if those are still in existence.
The end quality standards gives it for the class size, just and doesn't define like what classes, but gives it at the high school level and at elementary level. Um, that's why I just passed on to that committee that will look at it tomorrow.
But we're discovering some best practice and research actually is starting to cross over some of those numbers. You know, and that's why when we look at, you know, that there's presumably somewhere in the world that we've determined that one in five is a best practice for a high-quality education.
No, this is just about saving money.
So this is a matter of example too, because that is so out of proportion with the rest of the country. That the, the um, one of the points that was most interesting to me, having watched this now for a while, it used to be that we would have saved seventy-five million if we had um moved, in twenty sixteen, these numbers were um we would have saved the state, if we had maintained at one point four six, one to four point six. We would have saved the state eighty-six point four million. Um, we are now at one to four point two three, and moving to a ratio of one to five would save the state one hundred and seventy-five million. So we're not getting closer to a one to five ratio, it's not that it's best practiced or otherwise, but there's probably no other state in the country with anything as low as a staff to student ratio of one to five, not probably even close to that number, I don't think. Uh, maybe New Hampshire, Maine, but I, I, I think Maine, maybe. But I, I would say, I'm guessing it's closer to one to ten or something, I'm not quite sure. Um, but it's so out of range with what is um makes no sense, and it drives the cost of education statewide. We, I think in Chittenden County, recognize that's probably not what we would find our numbers to be when we ask that at budget time or whatever. What are our sort of staff, adult student in the building, is it one to five? I don't really know, because we've never really asked for that as boards. At, we know class sizes, we talk about that a lot, but it's the other, there are other drivers of the other adults in the building that are impacting this, and so I don't know that one to five is like a best practice number, to be honest, Brian. I think it's just that it's an example of what could be saved if we even moved that little in the right direction versus that little in the wrong direction.
Right, and Brian was referring to that, the research that's done about class size, it's, numbers really don't matter.
Yeah, right, it's equality.
So I think another important part of this resolution is that it isn't saying you're gonna get penalized for not having those ratios. And they're talking about ratios for different categories of schools and school districts, but that somehow the state would provide support to help you achieve those ratios. So um, you know, it's not really a punitive, I'm sorry. Um, there's a tentative agreement in Burlington if you're interested. Um, so I think that's, and that's an important part of this resolution that we haven't focused on. That this isn't saying, if you don't reach the target ratio, we're gonna penalize you somehow. This is saying, we'll provide support to try to help you get there. Andre?
Coming back to what the question I raised is whether contractual staff would be part of the ratio or not, because I'll, I'll give an example that I was made aware of, um, with the federal government, everybody gets excited when they reduce the federal workforce. But the public doesn't realize that in some cases, they reduce one federal worker and replace them with three contract workers.
Yes.
And then there's another federal worker that oversees the contract, but the reduced one.
That, that has gone up at the state level too.
And that's what my concern is.
So I think that's a really valid concern and something that we could certainly raise um in the conversation.
Sure, thank you.
So just to move us along, how many people feel comfortable with the concept of this resolution? Okay, so that's the majority. We probably should have started by saying that these resolutions, Kelly, were all developed um as cost containment ideas, and they were developed by a group of people that wanted wanted to take um, take some ideas to the legislature.
There was this group that was convened to like right after the governor said, hold budgets to zero, change the, town meeting day revote, twenty percent on healthcare.
Same task force that brought us this year's.
I bet that's gonna get a lot of conversation.
Well, it.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 it was like a group of us who were willing to gather, there was.
Right, no, I'm just saying like in that resolution, I'm not saying, because like the policymakers could get the same people who came up with this great cut twenty percent, like health plan thing.
And then we'll need another resolution, because we had to get one.
Hold us to it by taking away our education funding, so I'm just not comfortable with that.
That, this is not a task force that's going to make a decision in the final moments of the legislative session. Um, yeah, okay, so the next one was explore state-funded retirement buyouts that have conditions rehiring on achieving ratios. So basically, this is um, the state would pay for an early retirement incentive if you agree that you wouldn't replace that person. Um, so it's a way of the state putting up some money to help districts um get to better staffing ratios when those better ratios make sense. Kim?
So our group, there were um, a number of us, and it was a concern I raised when this resolution came, is that um, that if you are already within the targets, that you could rehire, so that a offering, a state offered early retirement incentive didn't require a district to potentially drop a program if they were already within and not allowed to rehire to be able to offer the early retirement incentive. I think again, as we speak in Chittenden County and those of us who are sitting around the small group I was talking with felt as though um we are likely within our targets and would still benefit the state often to allow a statewide incentive to retire potentially a higher, a higher paid educator who's at the end of their career. Um, and potentially, even if rehiring, bringing in a um, in theory, less expensive staff member. And so I guess the concern that the group that I was sitting with was that um, that it, you could rehire if you were within the target. You could still offer the incentive and you could rehire for the position if you were within the target ratios.
I read this to say, you only get the incentive if you're using it to reach a target ratio. I'm not seeing this as a statewide program. I'm seeing this as the state being able, being willing to put up some money to help you achieve the target. So I'd say our district would never qualify for any of that money. But there could be a district that is trying to achieve a target ratio who thinks they could achieve it by offering the retirement incentive. Um, so that a teacher would meet without them having to fire someone. That, that's how, that's how I interpreted, that's how our group discussed it. Kelly?
Um, when people retire in this way, are they really retired and they keep this? And they don't come back, or could they be hired by a different district and keep this bonus?
No, they, they have to be receiving retirement.
It's like Massachusetts police are always retiring with some bonus while they were injured and then getting rehired by some other police.
That's like people in Uthulia, you know, can't rehire how to train.
So this would be an initiative that does not pay out if you then take a different job as a teacher in Vermont.
You have to be. You have to retire.
Go to another state.
Yeah, she probably could do that.
Since we all through the state it called paper, all the districts.
Yes, right, it wouldn't make any sense, would it? Other comments?
This is really geared towards not having to look, to riff.
Yes.
A lower teacher in attendance, uh, the position disappears.
Right.
Unless you get a busload of students you had not counted.
Yeah, and, and only in those districts that are trying to reach a target ratio.
And I, that, when the conversation was at the V S B A table, I think it was not as black and white that it would not be offered more broadly. And to the extent you're going to improve your ratios, meaning not rehire that position, you could be eligible. So it wasn't like abroad either Essex is eligible or they're not eligible. But it, it was the conversation that I understood around the table, so if we support in concept the idea that an incentive be offered to the extent people are improving their targets or within the target range, we could ask for some clarification on the language, I think. Because um, that's a different understanding, Martha, than what was being discussed when it came to us as a board. Um, but I had the same concern and, and offered the same argument um, as did Chittenden Easton, I think, Winuski, that you might have the right ratios, but the statewide cost might be, benefit from the retirement of someone at the top of the pay scale. And even if you were not losing the position, benefit from the rehire of.
Yeah, well, I can't see, personally, I can't see the state ever paying for that. I mean, I think individual districts have done that in the past, and used it as a way to save money and would continue to do it. But um, while there is some statewide benefit, I don't think it's probably as big a benefit as getting rid of a whole position.
No, definitely not the state of getting rid of a position, I think the intent, there are some different districts that really struggle with despite finding enrollment, particularly in smaller districts where it may in fact be somebody's neighbor or relationships that make it especially hard to riff despite the fact the numbers might warrant it. And so this was to offer something to support that.
Yeah, well, and I think the resolution before this should help support that as well. Are we ready for a show hand on this? So I don't think we're absolutely clear about what it does, but um, I think we can ask questions at the meeting. But is the general concept one that we think is worth exploring? Raise your hand if you think it is, okay. All right. Phew, um. Establish standards for fact-finders in the collective bargaining process. So this is the, a concept that instead of having fact-finders base their recommendations on um comparability, that they could look at other factors. I have a few questions about this based on the fact that because of the income sensitivity provisions in our formula, I'm not sure how much an individual community's um economic factors should be a part of the equation, but I do think there are statewide factors like C P I. And um, you know, what's happening to household income generally in the state and so forth. But I don't think it's worth quibbling about the examples they give, I think um I don't know, I don't like it, I'm sorry. Every community has, in many ways, the same ability to pay under our present education funding formula. But I do think the fact-finding process should involve more than comparability. Are we willing to say that that's something we agree with?
I think we have to when you see the numbers as to how different Chittenden County is versus, and so we're compared to the other.
Well, we're playing hot against each other.
If we're doing the act, um, if we're getting our money through the state and we're compiling it, and I agree with you, it needs to be based on state recommendations.
No, I, I support it as written.
Where the, um, for the reasons you mentioned, Marla, and I think that um, far too often, it really is just simply what the last contract settled at, and that derives a bootstrapping that happens in a way that is really unsustainable for the taxpayers who are supporting budgets or not. And so that's a little bit where I see the local impact to matter, Martha, in terms of a community's ability or willingness to support the budget, which is eighty percent salary and benefits. So I think um, that in, aside from income sensitivity is, is impactful in, in, in the process, so. Think those are examples, any? I think those are examples, anything would be better maybe than what we're currently getting, so.
Maybe should say that state slash community's ability to pay so that it puts some focus on the fact that it isn't a, it isn't completely about how individual communities and more.
Fortunately, I think the communities are voting though. So I don't know how we would evaluate the state's ability to pay, but I think we have evidence that will let us know the community's ability.
You can look at C P I, you can look at household income, you can look at all those things on a state level.
Is this saying that it would eliminate the ability to look at comparables? Is that what this resolution is saying?
No, it says greater weight to economic factors.
That's not how I read that, that doesn't say greater weight, that says informing. That's a list of legitimate measures, so it seems like they're discounting the comparables entirely. They're phrasing that in a way that means that all comparables are no longer something I can look at, which I don't agree with.
I guess unless could comparables be on.
Yeah, I think comparables should, comparables should be on that list for sure.
On the list, yeah.
Yeah.
But I think that if you completely remove that, which this language does, you're only looking at that, you're not looking at any of the comparables in the region that you're in.
So the first statement says give greater weight to these things. But the second statement is.
No, that that's describing the current situation, but whereas is.
No, I'm I'm looking at this, I'm sorry, so.
I think the resolution itself is here and it does say that require the neutral fact finder to consider only statutory list of legitimate measures rather than a pattern of area, area salary.
But it might be rather, maybe even whomever votes offer the suggestion rather than primarily a pattern of areas or whatever, which may include a list of measures of a community's ability to pay, which may include comparable area information.
Just a pattern.
Right, um, I, so I think, I think the intent would be that it obviously is still part, or at least I hadn't thought about it or read about it or heard about it to be that it would be to the exclusion of that information, but rather that there would be a requirement that the reports address the other um, components that would be defined in statute. And the fact finders reports, I think, can be pretty variable and not necessarily weighing some of those other pieces.
I'd say mostly don't.
Don't.
Keely, yeah, and then Patrick.
Uh, we might be able to solve this with specific wording changes, but I think in general, the idea of expand the number of factors being considered is good. And we might mostly agree to that high level concept.
Do people think, I'm comfortable with that high levels concept?
Just make sure they word it to actually mean that.
So we can support it if offering.
Okay, how many people agree with that?
Expanding the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, great. And the last one, um. Establish guidelines for reserve funds and budget surplus. So.
Can, can I ask a question? I thought we were governed by some rules already financially, I mean grant with the P C. We had to turn, oh, so much money, you you had to put it back into the general fund or have a vote and designate it for a specific usage.
Yeah, but some districts have established surplus funds to, how do they word it? Stabilize their budgets. You know, so they've basically established, and I'm familiar with it in districts that tuition. So they've put aside in some cases really big chunks of money in case they have students move to the district and.
They didn't have the voters vote on it, they just established it?
No, they had the voters vote to establish it. But I think this became a big issue for the legislature. The year we had those, what were they called, we had targets we had to meet.
Challenges retained or something?
No, more recently.
Allowable growth limit.
Allowable growth, thank you. And all of a sudden.
A new name, but it was so different.
All of a sudden districts were meeting their allowable growth by taking one-time money out of surpluses and putting it toward their budget. And so that's what raised the issue.
I can remember outside of a meeting having a conversation with Marilyn French and she was.
Frederick.
Uh, Frederick, sorry, who did the budget last year for us. She mentioned the name of one town and she mentioned how much money that people don't re- realize is the, is there, so it's actually hurting like when she's doing budgets for us and other districts that are abiding by the rules and doing the proper thing. It it's hard because some of the districts aren't and there's an unfairness to it. So I'm not sure how to word it, but if there's a.
No, this says establish guidelines for what you can do. And I think it makes perfect sense because you and I are paying for all those surpluses that people are just holding on to.
Guidelines are what they are, is guidelines and not requirements.
Yeah, it says appropriate amounts, right.
Yeah, this doesn't look like it would be legislative action, it would be guidelines at this point.
Suggested.
But then I would imagine if people couldn't abide by the guidelines, it could lead to legislative action. The first thing they've done is they're making everybody report, which they've never had to do before. So that will be an interesting first step, Keely.
Um, can I just say that I like how this resolution is worded with mention of specific people who are gonna be involved rather than policymakers will make a task force.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was just gonna point that out, that's the accountability there too.
I really understand what they think is going to happen.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Okay, can we do this one quickly? How many people think this is a good idea?
Yeah.
Is that a yes, Al? I can't see yours.
Yes, are you yes?
Okay, great, thank you very much for doing that. And next, at our next meeting, we'll be talking about who wants to be the person to vote for our district. If you want to go to the annual meeting, you should contact Lorna. Be prepared to tell her whether you're staying overnight. If you're not staying overnight, what meals you want on the day you're going to be there. And if you have any meal restrictions, that's the other thing they ask. Basically, are you a vegetarian or I suppose these days gluten free and so forth, so. Okay, questions about that? All right, so for next, any other local or statewide?
I think just so, oh, the proxy voting, we have it on for the next meeting, perfect.
Pardon?
The proxy voting, I just, that's on for the next meeting, so.
And we're doing the equity, um, anything else that anyone wants on the next agenda?
I was thinking it might be a good idea to give an update on that Burlington Free Press article regarding the decline in student scores vis a vis are we observing a similar trend?
So I think Beth, Beth is saying that Amy's gonna be reporting.
For the October.
Yeah, that's her.
Yeah.
I think it's important that we know where we're standing.
Yeah, and you're not saying yet whether it will be the first or second.
Yeah, correct, correct.
But we're going, absolutely going to.
Yes.
Anything else for the next. Right, takeaway is from tonight.
I think Beth's presentation.
Yeah.
On um.
As a state requirements, absolutely. Um, I think the goals that we added to our work plan would be good for the community to be.
As modified, maybe?
Yes.
Thank you, Patrick.
Can we go back to your table?
Do you want a third one?
Maybe a third one, Patrick, would be to use this as another opportunity to put something in about the voice's work in October. Does that sound good to folks? The voices to try to, try to get people to sign up to be part of the conversations in October. Liz can help you word that if you want. Okay, um, we are going into executive session, so is there anything else for open session? All right, hey, I'm sorry, I will entertain a motion that we move into executive session to discuss contract negotiations. Okay, any discussion, all those in favor say hi. Uh, he opposed, say nay. And we'll move to the conference room and Beth and Brian will join us, I guess.